Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, September twenty fourth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order. And Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltes.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock.
Here.
Councilmember Harjahausen.
I am present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protim Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a court, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. And just for point, Regan Bulley is joining us via Zoom with a three-hour time difference.
Wow.
So thank you for being on. So next item is approval of agenda. Do we have any changes, Regan?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. The agenda is posted. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Let's move into reports of commissions. We do not have an Economic Development Council report tonight. Do we have a youth council?
Yep.
You're up. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, of course. Uh, hello. My name is Silas Coffey. I'm the new chairperson for the youth council. So I'll be coming here. Yeah, thank you. Uh, let me pull up my notes real quick. I don't think. Um, all right, so our last meeting on September seventeenth. Um, I'll go over what we did. Um, so first we had Leslie Hamada come. She was proposing like a levy advertising to us for us to endorse it or to pass out flyers. Uh, we decided not to endorse it at that moment because we felt that we didn't have enough information to just do that um, right then and there. So we're doing that next month, uh, kind of reevaluate. Um, next, we did schedule planning. Um, so we kind of planned out what we wanted to do for the tree lighting. So we're going to do Letters to Santa again, because that's always really fun. And we also planned our road cleanup in November. Um, so that'd be a good time. Uh, next, uh, we went over Club Rush and Volunteer Fair. Uh, that's where we set up a table, um, at some of like Kent Lake and Kentwood. Uh, and we just get to advertise about the youth council, um, just to try and get members or get people involved with it. Uh, I'm running the one, uh, Kentwood in two days, so that'll be good. Hopefully, we can get some more members, um, to join us. Um, and then the last thing was elections, um, which, yeah, I'm the new chair. Um, and then we got a vice chair, coordinator, and treasurer. Yeah, that's all we did that last meeting.
Well, congratulations on becoming chair.
Yeah.
Does council have any questions for Silas?
Yeah. Yeah, what, in two days, you said, is it during school hours?
Yeah, it's during our lunches.
Okay, and where will you be at the?
I'll be at the, you, you, uh, it's in the commons area.
Oh, oh, I know, sorry. Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much for being here. Congratulations, and please thank everyone else in the youth council for all that they do. It's greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Of course, yeah.
All right, have a great evening. Next is Arts Commission. We just had a joint session with them, and that went very good. That was a great update. Um, Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, we do not have a report. Human Services, Brian, welcome.
Thanks. Do not adjust microphone. It's great to be here to give a report of Human Services, my very first report. So what we did in our last meeting, we finished the initial review of all the applications, forty-one of them. We did, we discussed some final recommendations, uh, in our meeting in October twenty-third. We're going to come together and say this is who we recommend to you guys to fund. We also discussed the human service, uh, human services assessment that is done by Central Washington, which you played a role in. That, so we're going to discuss that also in our October twenty-third, so they're going to bring all the findings on October twenty-third uh, to us during that meeting. So we're excited about that. And then we discussed the joint meeting with the council in November. We're excited to, to be a part of that as well. And then our, uh, kind of activity, we set up a visit with Storehouse on October the seventh to do a tour and meet the new man, to meet the new management. So we're, we're going to go take a tour over there. We're excited about that. Uh, agendas for our next meeting, as I said, we're going to determine, make the determination of the funding uh, results for those to present to you guys in November at that time. Uh, one of the things that was encouraged, uh, such an encouragement, which I guess doesn't have support because Darren hasn't been as positioned, but Darren often gave us some great, uh, data on the services that are being provided that are actually supporting the work that he's doing. And so that was super helpful as going through that. We didn't have that in the past, uh, so we appreciated that. And then Central Washington, again, will be here on October to present their research and their findings, so that was it.
Great, thank you. Council, have any questions for Brian? Thank you very much. Forty-one applications that you want.
Forty-one.
Must be a record.
Was it?
That must be a record.
It was a lot.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it was good.
And please thank the entire commission for doing that.
I would.
All right. Thanks, Brian.
All right.
Next is Parks and Recreation Commission. Let's see, Laura, okay, and then Planning Commission, Kenner, welcome.
Thanks for having me. So, uh, my name is Kenner Aronson, speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission. The last session that we had was last Thursday, September nineteenth. Uh, we held elections for chair and vice chair, so I was selected and uh, nominated and unanimously voted for chair, uh, and Kathy Foster, who is going to be the new vice chair, for those of you who know Kathy. Um, we were also briefed on House Bill eleven-ten by the staff members, and that generally concerns updated requirements for middle housing. So these are all the types of housing that we can't treat differently from single-family housing, uh, but generally have higher density requirements. So uh, some of the, some of the conversations around that is, uh, Covington is currently considered a tier-three city, which is less than twenty-five thousand population, but we're on the cusp. So one of our recommendations from the commission is to actually, uh, get an analysis from Burke Consulting to see what it would take to classify us as a tier-two city for these code updates, so we do not have to do that rework when we cross that threshold eventually. I think it's going to save some time. One of the, uh, one of the big, um, I guess, outcomes of doing that would be that we would no longer be able to classify our own middle housing or choose, uh, which ones we want. We would have to comply with six out of the nine types of middle housing, which is a whole bunch of tri, four, five, six plexes, cottage housing, things like that. And we've got those definitions available if anybody's interested. So one of the other main things we talked about is the gap analysis between our current code and, uh, the requirements of that house bill. And, uh, most of those are concerning titles seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, which generally have sections about density, housing types, parking, uh, in our development and review standards. So we can provide, uh, language for, for what that looks like, but there aren't very many areas that aren't impacted by, by this house bill. The third agenda was the Climate Action Grant, so, uh, we recently received some money to support Covington meeting the new requirements of House Bill eleven-eighty-one, which mandates planning for climate change, essentially. So some of the key projects funded by this grant are going to be, uh, Greenhouse Gas Reduction and Climate Resiliency Plan, uh, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's a, it's a reduction plan for greenhouse gas emissions. Um, a public tree assessment program, which is pretty exciting. We don't know much about our trees, and they're pretty good assets for climate change, so uh, some, some money to go do a tree assessment there. Our multimodal and non-motorized transportation plan, so this one's kind of long overdue, a lot of e-scooters, a lot of, uh, electric things on our sidewalks now that we never really planned for previously. And then the last one is a downtown heat island and streetscape mitigation. So a lot of parking lots, they hold a lot of heat, makes it kind of unbearable in the summer to be around. So a study to figure out how we can mitigate those effects.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Kenner? Thank you very much, and congratulations on being chair, and please pass on our thanks to the entire commission for all the hard work you do.
I see.
All right, thank you. Parks, Laura, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hey, thank you. Um, apologies that I was a little bit late. My daughter called from college, and I have to take that phone call, so. Um, I've got two meetings to update you on, August and September. Um, August, we heard from Landon about what's happening in the world of aquatics. As you can guess, it's very busy, very full, lots of people in the pool. Um, they're holding the pool together as best they can and breaking records of people left and right. I almost feel like it's the same old story, right? It just seems like every time they get more people in the pool, and we think you cannot fit another body in this pool, they somehow manage to do it. Um, there's a huge demand for their services in the community. It is going better with the implementation of Covington residents get to register twenty-four hours before everybody else. So Covington residents are getting their place in the programs that they want to be in. That, that policy has really helped with that. Uh, we also, in August, took a look at, uh, feasibility of an off-leash dog park. This has been something that the commission, especially a particular member of the commission, is very passionate about. It shows up in our pros plan as an item that's desired by the community. They're tricky to locate, um, and so we just took a, Ethan gave us some information about the things that we would need to consider, the city would need to consider when citing something like a dog park. So the really short story is we do not have a magic parcel that would work perfectly for a dog park at this moment in time. Uh, in September, we heard from, uh, Ben Parish about the Wingfield Open Space, so that's kind of behind Kentwood in that housing development. There's Jenkins, who kind of goes through there. Um, I think Coho something is the housing development back there. Uh, so there's been a partnership, um, with Mid-Sound, Mid-Sound Fisheries, is that? Is that right? Okay, thank you. Mid-Sound Fisheries and the city to do, um, some ecologic restoration there. But also there is kind of a trail that was put in by the developer. And so at the same time, they do this ecologic restoration, they also kind of want to do some trail work and trail restoration. So it's sort of like a hybrid project. It's not a traditional park. And the feedback that they got from the neighborhood is they don't want it to become a traditional park. The people that live there were a little bit sort of jittery about anything that would sort of invite extra traffic into that area. So we want to be respectful of that, um, but also make sure that what is already there is as good as it can be in terms of foot traffic. So uh, Ben provided, I guess, master plan, for lack of a better term, with a couple consultants, gave two options, the committee unanimously approved, no, or not approved, supported number two, like that was our preferred option. It's basically the option that does more. Um, but we did pass a resolution unanimously supporting either option, like one or the other is better than doing nothing. Um, let's see. Oh, we also heard from maintenance in September. Kind of the same story as aquatics. They're very, very busy, holding things together as best they can, like doing miracles of maintenance feat with the amount of people they have for the parks that they need to maintain. Jesse called out the CCP field renovation project, replacing the turf on that field. Um, and so that's, I think, holding up really well. Another thing you may or may not have noticed, but Tyler got in there and pressure washed the skate park, uh, which is a trick, because you don't want to pressure wash the mural off the skate park. So he cleaned up everything around the mural, and then they were able to put another layer of sealer on the skate park to hopefully kind of preserve that mural for as long as possible into the future. A question that came up amongst the, um, commission, maybe you have gotten the same question, is how come Founders Park isn't open? And we're still waiting on that transformer from the S B, um, still, so, still. And that's the story there. So, uh, uh, one more quick note in November, just, well, in November, we will be meeting with you November twelfth for our joint meeting, and then, um, because of the holidays in November and December, and the way our commission meetings fall, we are just going to do one combined meeting in, on December eleventh. So I won't see you in November to give you a report because we won't have a meeting, so. But that's, that's all. Any questions?
Council, have any questions? Sean.
Uh, Laura, thank you. Um, just as you were talking, I was curious if we have, and I, I know we do, um, counts for the pool, and I'm just wondering how many, how many people have been in that pool in its life?
Yes.
Um, it's over a million, isn't it?
Oh, gosh, like for the whole life of the pool, I'm sure. So I have, I have here the monthly, uh, report for August, and as of August, total aquatic center attendance, this is now about six weeks old, was eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-seven people.
For that month, so that's, and then you multiply that by twelve, it's over a hundred thousand people and for the life.
I believe that that is cumulative for the.
Oh, that's for the year.
Year.
That's a month. Well, no, Sean's right, that's.
Well, that's per month.
I'd love to see the overall estimate of the splash count for that, and I'd love to see us start doing some outreach on the history of this po, pool, the fact that we've got so much demand, and it is fifteen years past its useful life, you know, so that we can start building public support, recognizing this is a jewel that we have, but it's, it's time to, to replace it.
Absolutely, and you'll get full commission support on all of that.
The other thing that I thought about with pool numbers, it'd be interesting to somehow get skate park numbers too, um, just in, I was thinking, how would you do that? But, you know, maybe we just, at random times, you just go out and count the number of people, and then you can multiply that by, you know, seven for the week. But I'd love to see going forward, estimates on the visitation to our parks.
Um, yeah.
National Park Service does that, and they promote the bejesus out of their park numbers, you know, saying this is just going through the roof, and it, it has a, uh, impact on people saying, yeah, I see people are, you know, enjoying these, you know, yeah, so anyway.
And just throw some other numbers at you. Again, these are August numbers. So recreation swim attendance for that month was three thousand five hundred and eighty-four. Private rental attendance was one thousand two hundred and sixty, which is actually way down for whatever reason from the average. Aquatic activity attendance was six thousand three hundred and ninety-three. So lots and lots and lots of bodies moving through not only the pool, but the locker rooms, the showers, the bathrooms, like all, it's not just the pool, but it's also the ancillary things connected to the pool.
Laura, thank you very much, and please pass on our thanks to your entire commission for all that you do.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Laura.
Yep.
That concludes all of our commission reports. Uh, then let's, council, if you could please join me in front of the dais. We have some public communication proclamations. There's three proclamations to. How's that? Little more. Is that good? All right. We have three proclamations that we have, uh, to read and give tonight. The first one is, um, a proclamation that I wish we didn't have to do this one, but it's an issue that has been around for way too long, and bringing awareness, uh, to this and as much awareness as we can to try and stop, uh, domestic violence. Uh, this Saturday, we are also doing our Purple Light Night, lighting the purple tree, and, um, an awareness that Victoria Throm and the Covington Domestic Violence Task Force started quite some time ago. Ninety-nine, two thousand, I can't remember when, but it's been, and it's gone worldwide with that. So this is a proclamation that we give for October, because October is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, um, which should actually be all twelve months out of the year, but that's mostly in October, hence why we wear purple for that. And Gina Fineman from Dawn is here, um, to accept this proclamation, if you'd like to join us up here. And thank you for being here. Dawn is Domestic Awareness.
Domestic Abuse Women's Network.
Thank you.
Quite lengthy.
Yeah, I used to help out with that, and that's, but I appreciate everything your organization does. You go above and beyond to help those in need, and you don't stop, you just keep going. You make the Energizer Bunny look like he's standing still, so if you'd like to join us here. So this proclamation is, whereas in October nineteen eighty-nine, the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month commemorative legislation was passed by Congress, providing key leadership in the effort to reduce domestic violence. And whereas domestic violence affects many in our communities, one in three women and one in four men have experienced physical violence by a partner, and one in three teens has experienced some form of abuse in a relationship. As many as ten million children will witness domestic violence each year, and these are numbers that are reported, and there's a lot that are unreported. Whereas with continued public awareness programs, increased education on healthy relationships, and more people taking action against domestic violence, we will break the cycle of abuse and provide skills to empower victims and children. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Covington, do hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand twenty-four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Covington, and we strongly urge all citizens to take action by installing a purple light in their front porch light fixture to honor the victims and to give hope to those still living with abuse. And I would like to give this proclamation to you, Gina.
Oh, thank you.
And, um, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, I just want to say thank you for your support. We know we have a great partnership with City Covington and looking forward to more ways of partnering. Notice on your, your goals, um, and your vision that you have, safety, so I know it's part of your culture, and that's evident. So thank you for your support.
You bet, and thank you again for you and your entire team for what you do to help everybody. So thank you.
I'd like to get the photo.
Thank you.
Right.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron.
You bet. Thank you. Next is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and we have Deputy Chief Aaron Tireman. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This is going to be the first year that I'm not going to knock over the four-minute timer though.
It's, it's in a, oh, yeah, but you have to compete with me because I'm the one who usually knocks it over.
Perfect.
Yeah, so you're good. Thank you, and thank you for being here. And thank you again for everything that Puget Sound Fire, Regional Fire Authority does, um, not just for fires, but all the other assistance, FD cares, and that you provide.
It's truly our pleasure. Thank you.
So this proclamation is, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas in two thousand twenty-two, home fires killed more than two thousand seven hundred people in the United States. So roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. And the presence of working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas this Fire Prevention Week with the message, "Smoke alarms, make them work for you," I like that, strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working, smoking, smoke alarms in the home. And whereas the City of Covington recognizes the value of all information received from the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority and encourages our residents to be responsive to their public education, their measures to increase their personal fire safety awareness and practices. Now therefore, we, the City of Covington, do hereby proclaim October sixth through the twelfth of two thousand twenty-four as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Covington, and urge all citizens to support the public safety efforts of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, provider of fire and emergency medical services in Covington. I'd like to present this proclamation to you.
Thank you.
And thank you again for all that you do. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, uh, yeah, actually, uh, you know, we, if I never had to respond to another fatality fire in my career again, it would be, it would truly be a blessing. Um, and I appreciate the effort because smoke alarms do, they save lives when we go on fatality fires. Uh, for us, about nine times out of ten, there was no working smoke alarm. So when people can get notified, get out early, call us early. Um, not only is it the, uh, we prevent, there's a lot of life that is saved, uh, but there's also a lot of property that's saved as well. So just thank you for being a partner with us. Uh, we truly appreciate it, and we feel pretty blessed to be a part of the city.
Great, thank you. Great, you think, appreciate it, Mr. Micky, but thank you. The next proclamation is for Safe Schools, and our own chief, Adam Easterbrook. And this proclamation is, um, to bring awareness to help with safety in our schools, not only just with being nice to each other, but to help bring awareness to stop bullying, to help others, to help that one person that's hiding in the corner bring them out so that they are, feel safe. And a lot of it, even though this is for schools, is helping people realize to be safe at school because it may not be at home. So this proclamation is, whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings, yet the safety and well-being of our students, teachers, and school staff are unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence, such as substance abuse, gangs, bullying, poor discipline, vandalism, and absenteeism in our schools. And whereas it is the responsibility of all citizens and leaders, especially those in education, law enforcement, government, and business, to enhance the learning experiences of young people by helping to ensure fair and effective discipline, provide mental health support, promote good citizenship, and make schools safe and secure. And where our schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens. And the Observance of America's Safe Schools Week will focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop, and promote innovative answers to these critical issues. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Covington, do hereby proclaim October twentieth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, as America's Safe School Week in the City of Covington, and we ask all citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of the value of safe schools in our community as secure and peaceful places for learning, teaching, and working free of drugs, alcohol, weapons, and fear. And again, not just one week, but throughout the whole year to bring awareness, to help this. And I'd like to give this proclamation to you, chief.
You.
And thank you for being here, and, uh, thank you to you and your team working so well with the Kent School District, um, security on any issues, however minor they are, or whatever, to be there immediately and on top of it. So thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, we do have a great partnership with the school district. Uh, we're very appreciative of, uh, them being very quick to reach out to us. Uh, and it's allowed us to seamlessly work with them. And one thing I would encourage students to do is if you see something, say something. I know it's been around for a long time, but uh, it's vitally important to, uh, you know, you see someone struggling to go, uh, either approach. Uh, it's vitally important to, uh, you know, you see someone struggling to go, uh, either approach them or approach an adult and get them help. Uh, as they needed. So. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all very much for, um. Participating and partaking in those proclamations as they are very, uh, important. And not just us on the council, but everybody in our community. Uh, next is public comment.
Thank you.
Speakers. Next is public comment. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to the City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. And with that, so I do want to state that on new business item number two, we do have, um, to receive public testimony. To consider the resolution for the Kent School District's Proposition Number One. So if you're here to speak for or against that topic. Um, you can, uh, wait, I will have, um. Public testimony at that time to speak so, uh, that we don't have to speak at this time. So signing up, I have Leslie Hamada. Are you here for the levy? Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody else wishing to address counsel at this time in the audience? Is there anybody online wishing to address counsel? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand or approach the podium, uh, this public comment period is closed and we will have a second opportunity at the end of our council meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C two. We have a motion to approve.
So much. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next is new business item number one, and it is to. Consider an appointment to the youth council. We did have one interview tonight. Does counsel wish to take action tonight?
I.
Beth.
I move to appoint Amara Rihanna to. Youth Commission Position Number One with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Just been seconded to appoint Amera Rihanna to fill position number one on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, it was great to hear, um. Somebody. New to civic engagement and a passion to help. Um, better their community. And it was interesting because a lot of the, um, issues that they brought up had to do with. Littering and traffic and bigger things. It wasn't just their own personal, um. Day to day, it was something with a much bigger scale and. One thing that, um. They talked about was to help raise awareness and even though they are not part of the Kent School District as a student. Figuring out how they can become engaged in that, um, community as well, even though it's not their, their school that they attend, but. Had some great ideas there. It'd be nice to have that different perspective as well.
Right. Thank you, Beth. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, sure. I'll be really short. I second everything that Councilmember Porter said. And, um, when asked. About communication with the youth, I did appreciate that Amara said that, um. It is important to tell people that what they're doing is affecting all of us, no matter what the age. And I thought that was, um, a deep, a deep love of, of, um, well past, past the age. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Sean?
Uh, speak for it, um, and just a dovetail on Christina's. Comment, um, and an observation, uh, Amara comes across as much. More mature and older than, you know, Mike at first glance. And, you know, he answered the questions as a lot of the. Students that we see come here, but he asked a clarifying question, which even adults sometimes don't do, you know? We asked him about what it would be like to be an ambassador and he asked. Can you tell me more about what that means to be an ambassador? And that shows a level of maturity, um, that. Like I said, many adults don't have that. So confidence, maturity, co- um, you know, uh, desire to understand. Yeah, I, that, that was, that was really powerful for me. So.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Amara Rihanna to fill position number one on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth. Two thousand twenty-seven. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations, Amara. Right. Next is new business item number two, and this is to receive public testimony and to consider a resolution. To support the Kent School District number four fifteen, Proposition Number One for capital projects and technology replacement levy. We ask that this be brought back to us to discuss. Uh, there's consensus on the council to have this. And, uh, just a brief, uh. So this is. July twenty, uh, tenth, July tenth of two thousand twenty-four, District Board of Directors approved Resolution sixteen eighty to place a proposition on the ballot. And, um. So this is considering whether we as a council wish to also support this levy. And I think before we go into council comments, I'd like to open it for public comments if that is okay with council. Okay, so, um, first is Leslie Hamada. If you'd like to approach the podium. Thank you for being here, Leslie.
I brought some flyers tonight.
Thank you.
Just facts. Good evening, uh, Mayor Wagner and Council. Uh, happy to be here. Leslie K. Hamada. I reside at two eight zero two six one hundred and eighty-ninth Avenue Southeast. I do have a Covington mailing address. Uh, I am testifying tonight in support of. Supporting or endorsing capital and technology replacement levy for the Kent School District. I decided to continue working on the Citizens for Kent Schools Committee, which I have for a long time. I've kind of been heading it up this year, which helps to pass levies and bonds over the years. But on this particular levy, the reason I really dug in is because I know the. The real truth about the necessity of passing this levy. I mean, we always say it's critical, but this is critical and I am in a position to have. Had inside information to know how critical it is. Uh, and I know the multiple needs in this district. We can all agree that the state school model for funding needs to be adjusted. After being, you know, the model was constructed years ago and that's probably where a lot of the trouble with many school district arises, but that's not happening. So in the meantime, we have to use levies and bonds to supplement our kids for what they really need. And what we as a community really want for them. At the end of two thousand and twenty-four, the capital projects or technology levy funding will be zero. Okay, zero. They've been playing this out to the end. Um, i- in previous years, they kept replenishing it when the levies were passed. If this money does not pass, the money then comes out of the general budget. Which is already stretched thin, which I'm very well aware of. When most of the budget is eighty-three percent of it goes to salaries and staff. So if you start having to take money out of your general fund for capital improvements. Or projects that have to be done, a roof's leaking or something that has to be done. Then you know it's gonna affect the amount of bodies you're gonna have in the schools and. We need more bodies in our schools with our kids. The district heard from the voters that the original levy was too high. And regardless of what you're seeing on social media, they had a consulting team go out and find out. Why the, the, the levies haven't been passing and it's not a lot of stuff that you're seeing on social media. It is actually. The voters are really strapped. They're really worried about how they're gonna stand their homes and pay their taxes. And so they went out and they cut this, this new levy by forty-nine percent. And it's a three-year levy for a total of ninety-two point eight billion dollars. And when I tell you I've looked at this budget backwards and forward, it is a bare bones budget. The district has been having lis- lesson, listening sessions in person and online. And explaining everything in it. They also have on the website a complete breakdown of every project they've had. On bonds or levies or whatever, if they're completed, how much the project went on. It's very detailed on a spreadsheet. And as we all know, strong schools build strong communities. For the price daily, if you've taken your kids to McDonald's or Dairy Queen or, or Wendy's for a. Soft ice cream cone at a dollar seventeen bargain, that's what if the average household would have to pay extra. To, to pass this levy. I think that's not too much to ask. So we can give all of our kids a twenty-first century education. And I stand here urging a yes vote on this support for your resolution. And in the future, your endorsements personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. So anybody else in the audience wishing to, um, address either for or against. Uh, us, just, um, endorsing this. Is there anybody online wishing to, uh, state yes or no? Yeah, that is all the public comments. Does council have any questions or comments that they would like to bring up on this? Beth.
I agree with what our public commenter had mentioned about some of the reasons why it may not have passed before and I, I can appreciate. The district going back to the. Say drawing board, but really prioritizing the most urgent needs. It makes it more palatable, I think, for, for folks that, just to see that there's a. Trying to meet in the middle, um, to make it, uh, easier for folks to bear the burden.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anybody else wishing? Debbie?
Thank you. Um, I also appreciate that the school district did the pencil sharpening to come up with that forty-nine percent cut. Um, and I agree that those must be difficult mis- decisions to make as we do with our, our budget. We live in Covington and, um, obviously we'll pay this additional levy. But it is important and to me, the things that really stood out were for the kids' safety. Things like the, well, cybersecurity operations. We know that there, there's hacking going on in other school districts. Um, we need to keep our systems safe from that disaster recovery. We know, um. We're, we're gonna face a big one someday and I don't think our schools are ready and able to, to provide the services they need to during. Um, disaster recovery and intercom systems. How can we keep our kids safe from the worst possible scenario, which would be. A shooting incident if the intercom systems aren't working. So I think for the safety of our kids and the. The longevity of our buildings, it's something that I certainly support.
Thank you, Debbie. Joe?
So. I think one of the biggest things that, uh, along with what Debbie was saying, uh, we just have to look to Highline to see cybersecurity. Highline can't. Use. Highline is doing school like when we were all in school right now. They have no access to computers. They can't print anything right now. They can't, uh. If it requires technology to do, Highline cannot do it. I don't want to see that in Kent. I want to see us have the good cybersecurity. But we just had a proclamation about, uh, fire safety. Part of this is updating the fire alarms. And there are two schools in Covington that have fire alarm systems that were brand new before I was in middle school. And that was, I. It makes me feel old to say this and I'm sorry to say this. I'm also the youngest member of this council. Uh, but nineteen ninety-five was when the new, when Mattson's fire alarm was brand new and I wasn't in at Mattson yet in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, so these are, Mattson and Cedar Heights need new fire alarms. If there is a fire at those schools and those fire alarms fail, that's a problem. We are also talking about replacements for the boilers. That's hot water for the schools. Kent Lake needs a new, new, needs a new boiler, roof replacements. If the roof fails at Mattson, which. There's not much roof line at Mattson unless it's mostly outdoors to begin with, but Mattson needs a new one. Kent Lake needs new roof. Things that are needed for these schools are what's in this. We. I, I really wish there was better funding sources. But I believe that this is something that we really need to be supportive of. I think in all honesty. Regardless of what others may say, this is something that hundred percent needs to pass. This is what I, I believe this community wants our schools to be. Healthy, wants them to be safe, wants them to have everything, and I am very supportive of this levy.
Thank you, too. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against this? I just want to say that I know like what Leslie said, the stuff that's on social media. Social media, you can't believe, um, over half the stuff. And I personally, I'm speaking for myself. That. This is a vote for the kids. And for our staff. This is critical for our schools and no matter what you, people think about what's, it's. For the kids, safety of the kids, safety of the teachers, safety of our infrastructure to keep our kids safe. And we just passed the proclamation for safe schools week. And if kids don't feel safe in the schools, they don't feel safe to get an education. They don't get an education. They don't graduate and that creates a whole nother issue in our community. So I fully s- support. The supporting of this resolution. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against? Well, actually, we need to have a motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass a resolution supporting the Kent School District number four fifteen, Proposition Number One. Regarding a capital projects and technology replacement levy. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, absolutely. So, uh, you know, echoing, uh, the comments made thus far. Um, it, you know, it's in our, our, our vision, mission and goals to, to support a, you know. And to forge a growing community that's safe for everyone. Um. Schools are the absolute foundation of that. As council members, our job is to ensure that our, the children, you know. Um, of our community are, uh, you know, given every opportunity to succeed and to contribute to our community and. Basic funding. I mean, to me, this levy is basic. This is no fluff. This is basic stuff. You know, and as an individual, I'm sitting here thinking, I still have two kids. I gotta get through this. Um, but, you know, we're talking about all of our community's children here and we're talking about funding fire alarms. We're begging people to do this. It's. I go on and on in my soapbox about the school funding. So yes, this is the basic minimum. I personally would support much more. Um, but yeah, I wholeheartedly support the motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Echoing on that, I think. The majority of people want their children to be in a safe and healthy environment when they're at school. And I believe he is going to do that. Uh, is this going to be, hey, we passed this in November. Every project starts in January. No, we all know that. And I think that's something we all have to realize that this is a three-year levy. That, but this levy dollars will probably take five to six years to get everything implemented correctly, especially when it comes to. New roofs. Roofs are expensive, finding the right process to get a roof in there. And making sure that it is done correctly. So there is a process to do, but I am very hopeful that this levy does pass and I'm fully supportive of it. I believe it's gonna create a healthy environment for our students in this area.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against this motion? It's moved and seconded to pass a resolution supporting the. It's moved and seconded. To pass a resolution supporting the Kent School District, number four fifteen, Proposition Number One. Regarding a capital projects and technology replacement levy. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution carries. You wanna pass on the news, Leslie? Thank you. Thank you. That concludes our new business for tonight. Uh next is future agenda items. And looking at our next meeting is on September twenty-fourth. We do have a study session. That starts at five thirty um working with. The co- um community development to discuss the comprehensive plan and then our council meeting at seven o'clock. Does council have anything else that they would like to see on a future agenda? All right. Seeing none, let's move into council staff comments. Start with chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh we finally have our own. A fully operational uh up and running. Uh we were using it. Uh to train, just to get it up and get some hours on one of our pilots. And we've already uh made a capture because he unwittingly spotted a car prowler and then we took. So uh that was accidental, but uh we have our first capture. So um. Kudos to the officers. It's a nice job. But uh yeah, we have two pilots. Uh we're hoping to get a third. Uh and we'll get that thing up there as many times as we possibly can. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Sean.
Uh and that came from a grant that we got money for that.
That's correct.
Great, yeah.
Yep, all grants.
Really cool. So um I would love at some points to see a demonstration come out for the Covington Air Force, so.
Very good, doing the uniform.
Yes, I do.
Yes, good evening, Council. Um the question came up earlier on how uh what the attendance at the Aquatic Center is. Uh during the year. So I looked it up. Hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and five for two thousand and twenty-three. So. That's in-water attendance or splash counts is what we call it. So quite a few.
How long has the park or the pool been open?
Forty.
Forty plus years.
It's nineteen seventy-seven, so.
So several million people been in that. Yeah, been in that pool. Wow.
Thank you, Ethan. Dawn?
Uh nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Hi, good evening, Council. Um I just wanna say that I'm excited to have uh Kenner and Kathy as our new chairs. And vice chair. It was lovely to see Kenner there tonight. Um and also, we just look forward to talking all things comprehensive plan with you at our next meeting. And I just a heads up that once that's done, we're gonna roll right into housing as Kenner had described. So um. Lots of work ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Uh Casey? Casey on?
Yep. Hi, good evening, Council, uh Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that we received a confirmation last week from Department of Revenue. For the TBD sales tax. So it will be effective January first. And we should see our first uh cash start to roll in at the end of March of next year. And that was it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Casey. Mark?
Um one quick thing tonight. I just wanna let you know that we finally received the signed and entered dismissal order from the court. In the libita case that has been ongoing for the past couple of years. And I'll send you out a brief um. A brief, uh I'll send you out the dismissal order um pretty soon here, but just as a reminder, this is the case where someone hit. Another individual who was driving through our construction site. So that order, due to a bunch of court processes that need to be followed. That court order was just finally entered. So it's been dismissed and no money has been paid. From city coffers or from WCIA. So other than that, there's uh no executive session and I have nothing additional to report.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Thanks for being here tonight. Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing for me tonight.
Great. Thanks, Reagan. Krista?
Good evening, Council. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Uh so only thing I really have is after conversation with other members of the. SCA RTC Caucus and wondering why our RTC meetings have been getting canceled by Chair Masqueda. We are having the October meeting uncanceled and we will be meeting. Uh next month for our first RTC meeting since July. Yeah, well, August is usually a, we always cancel the August meeting, but uh. We are uncanceling this one, which I'm I'm actually I'm very happy for. And then we will be going from there. Uh do remember, do. Uh remember everyone that if you are planning to reapply for any of your SCA appointments, which I need to do as well. We, the application should be open. So if you need to reapply for any of the committees you're on for SCA. Uh make sure you get that taken care of.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer?
Um I just wanna say I'm sorry I missed the uh food drive. I hope it went really well. And um yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Debbie?
Thank you. Well, that was my first thing to talk about was, well, first of all, thank Mayor Wagner for hosting the um. Mayor's Day of Concern. And for those that didn't know, we had Fred Meyer. Uh jump in at the last minute and say that they wanted, they wanted to participate. And then when we had our volunteers show up. They had forgotten that they'd already scheduled a a Girl Scout, Boy Scout.
Girl Scouts.
Thank you. Troop doing something. So anyway, it didn't happen.
Clean out.
Yeah, but but we had um between Safeway and the Dollar Tree. Um I know Mayor already shared shared this in our earlier meeting, but twenty-two hundred pounds of food, which is up from the last one that was done. And five hundred dollars in cash. Oh, so.
Yeah, there was another two hundred dollars that was donated at the very end.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. Um. So it was a a great day and it's always good. Um thank you to the the council members and all of the volunteers that helped, but it's a. A great time for us to um. Show up and and be representing our city, but also talk to um folks that are. Struggling with food needs that we can share information. So um. SCA held a lunch and learn about two weeks ago on a Friday and uh council. I think there were just two of us. Yes, council, council member Porter and I attended. Um it was about the King County Crisis Care Centers that are gonna be put in. Um this was a levy that was passed and they will be putting in five of these centers. One will be in South King County, yet to be determined. Um they're going through the RFP process right now to find. Uh providers that want to um host and manage these centers. Um I sent the the presentation to um. Reagan and asked if he would consider, copy G one at your mayor. Um having them come and speak. Cause I I think it would be good information for everyone to see. What these centers will do for our community and um how they'll be run. Um and then lastly, I just wanted to say um a couple of us also went last night to the uh forty-seventh district candidate forum. And Chris Sterns was there. Sadly, oh there were only two candidates that were able to make it. And um Ted Cook was the other one. And um not very many people from the public showed up, which was um disappointing. But Chris made a comment about those crisis care centers and said that he is lobbying to get one of those in our district, in forty-seventh district. So um that would be great. We'll wait and see what happens next. And I think that uh Reagan is gonna have it on an upcoming. Agenda or as a presenter.
Thanks, Debbie. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. The RFA had its um. Second or second meeting in September last Wednesday and uh like us, it's budget season for them also. And so they're starting the initial discussions around setting the uh twenty-twenty-five fire benefit charge. Um it's a um. Uh equation that the fire department uses to set uh fire benefit rates for all this. Uh a section of it is related to property tax and then another is a fee that they can add. Um and there's a little calculation that goes in and that spits out a number for uh each resident business. Uh a couple of new members on the RFA. Uh had questions about this process and asked that the fire department actually come and present. They're gonna do this at the RFA, but to expand. Uh and multiply the uh opportunity for people to learn about how this. Benefit charge is set. Uh they asked the fire departments come out and present at city council. Uh and so uh the RFA may reach out to the city of Covington and. Request some time on a future agenda. So uh I'll keep you in the loop on that.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. Um just two other things. I was really encouraged to read in the weekly update about the pickleball tournament and that the numbers picked up. I was surprised to see that the vast majority of people aren't from Covington. Um and so I wanna. See how we can capitalize on that becoming, you know, more. I talked to Reagan a little bit about this, about becoming it becoming a regional event. And so I'd be really curious if there's any way to do a follow-up with people that that participated. Why did they pick ours and what, you know, they'd like to see going forward? Cause. Yeah, I still think there's a lot of untapped demand for for pickleball. So. And then finally, another kudos. Uh we just keep hearing from people unsolicited how great uh SR five sixteen is now. And two seventy-second with all four lanes open. You're just. Uh I was just got a post on Facebook the other day from like two years ago saying, you know, hey, you know, we're working on this road and so. Um you know, just well done to uh. City staff and and all. It looks great. So now we just move on to the next section. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Not a lot to report. Uh Joint Recommendations Committee, we have a meeting this Thursday. Um and then there will be a couple more before they finalize the Community Development Block grant funding. For the cycle. One of the programs that we have is the, that we participate in is the Minor Home Repair, along with the city of Sea-Tac. And Taquilla and Des Moines. So we'll have final word at the end of the year and whether we uh. That project is funded. And Purple Light Night's coming up on Saturday, six, six P M. Take a step against domestic violence with the one and a half mile walk. Um around the town center area and uh seven thirty. Free lighting. Merrill kicks off to that. So great community event. It's nice to see activation in that area, especially. Town center with the movie night and then there's market coming up and trying to. Get people to realize there's another little corner of Covington that we're gonna, we're gonna make great things happen there. So. And. That's, that's it.
Thanks, Beth. Christina?
Thank you for saving the bus for last. Just kind of point that out. Um what a wonderful meeting with the Arts Commission. I feel like many of the dreams of yesterday are really seeing the wheels moving today. And um that was probably one of the most successful meetings, in my opinion, that we've had with them and. Uh just so much happening. Um so very proud of, very proud of that commission and that they're collaborating with other commissions. To bring to life what we see today. Um while sitting in for our lovely Joe at our picking committee. Two, two weeks ago almost. I, w- we had a presentation from Joanna Nelson from King County Urban Forestry. Uh what they've developed is a new guide to enhance urban tree protection in King County. And why I'm telling you this is because they actually uh evaluated multiple cities, many, many cities. And categorized them into four categories of needing help and comprehensive. Regulations, there we go, that's the word. Uh and al- already in place. And Covington was in category four with a fabulously comprehensive tree ordinance and. And I was really proud. I was really proud. Um. So just stating that. And we got to brag on our um ballot measure passing and, you know, they asked what our success was and of course it was. Literally the entire city staff, uh council members. So that was really great to talk about. And then we had our first ever last Friday. Skip field trip. To four of, four destinations, four of the active. Um projects that Skip has been donating to um and investing in. And it was really cool to see. One thing that I did notice in. In all of the affordable housing that we, in in most of affordable housing. It's very common to come across one-unit studios, um maybe a one-bedroom, maybe a two-bedroom. But I wanna, I I almost wanna say all four. I I'm sure about three, but we'll just err on side of caution. And at least three of these uh projects were all three to four-bedroom. Facilities that can, which which is so, again, rare in the market and so needed for families. Not just for individuals, you know, one or two, um but for families. And we're talking about from renovation. From complete renovation of something that's been around for dozens of years to uh. New foundation that's putting up completely new homes, fourplexes and. Um it was just really nice to finally see our money penciling and not just penciling, but. Creating something that we talked about for so long. I know organizations and partnerships take time to um. To get off the ground, but this was really nice. Uh we didn't go over time and we didn't, I don't think we factored in the traffic in Seattle. Uh but it was really nice to see. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk about that with anybody individually, but it was, and it was. In South King County, most of them, uh it was Verian Sea-Tac Renton. Right around that area. Um so it was, it was really cool to see that something was happening and it was great. So um yeah, thank you. I think that's everything. I'm gonna forget something, but that's everything for now.
Thank you, Christina. Um I just wanna thank. Everybody who participated in the food drive. Um council, volunteers, boy scouts, Kentwood cheerleaders. Uh it was amazing how many people came out and then thanks to everybody. Who donated um like Debbie said, over twenty-two hundred pounds. Which beat last year's Fall Mayor's Concern. And then uh the seven hundred dollars in cash. And thank you to Fred Meyer, Safeway and Dollar Tree for allowing us to be there. I met with Stephanie today, um the executive director of the storehouse and we. Well, we personally thanked Safeway on Saturday and then we went over to Fred Meyer today to thank Colby for allowing us to be there. And um we will be doing four mayor's day of concern next year. I told her we need to do that too. Um not that I'm asking everybody to participate in it, but I will.
You said four different ones?
Four different ones next year. Yep. Um dates to be decided upon. And uh but Fred Meyer with April and Colby there, they are extremely excited. About having us there now to do the food drive. Forty-seventh district debate last night, I thought was very interesting and hearing from both can- uh candidate Ted Cook. And our uh own Chris Sterns. Representative Chris Sterns, um with some great ideas. And I look forward to seeing how that turns out. Uh Chipotle had their grand opening today. Um I think that is every time I go to Kent Lake. Cedar Heights. The elementary schools, not only just last year, but even the past three weeks, that was. The only question I got asked.
Students, my neighbors keep asking me.
So when I told them last, when I was there last Thursday at Cedar Heights. Um standing out, where all the kids came in, they were all standing outside. And I made the announcement that it was opening at ten forty-five on Tuesday. I couldn't hear anybody, nothing else that was going on. They were, so I don't know how busy they are today, but. It is a beautiful building inside. They've done an excellent job of. Reconfiguring what it looks like. Uh and then I wanna thank. The Arts Commission uh for a great joint session. I mean, their imagination and. Level of what they wanna turn Covington into and adding art. I, it's just, it's amazing. But I also wanna thank all of our commissions because every commission, every volunteer in our commissions. Goes out of their way that they don't have to. It's it's time that they put in to make a difference in Covington. And they have, and even talking to. Past commissioners and. past commissioners and like past planning commissioner and Parks and Arts. They, they're just, they helped start the foundation when the city started and it just keeps growing and building and building. And it's just amazing at what our commissioners do and bring towards us. There's no way I can think of all that. It's, so I'm just glad that we have these commissions and I look forward to what the next wow factor is going to be when they bring it to us. That is all I've got tonight. So our next, this goes into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Laura?
Laura Morrissey, Covington resident. I just wanted to pop up here as an individual and compliment the new five sixteen project. The road is great, but I'm actually most excited about the sidewalk and the foot connection now between various parts of Covington. Kent Kangley is a very busy road. That sidewalk feels incredibly safe to me. And I know that's because of design standards that not only the staff put a lot of time into, but that you guys approved. So great job from somebody who moves through Covington on foot all the time. And also on that, thinking of Adam and his drone, I just want to compliment and express my appreciation for the work the police do. In a decade of running, most of it as a solo female, I have never, ever had a problem in Covington. And I know that is because the police deal with things at night that I don't want to know about. So I just express my appreciation and my gratitude for their work, for your work with the road. I mean, this is a city that I am just immensely proud of. And I feel like we are really embodying our motto of growing towards greatness.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise their hand. Seeing nobody else approach the podium or raise their hand. And there is no executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at eight twelve.